Well, good afternoon. Today is December 1st, 2025. Just got off a big Thanksgiving weekend, gobble gobble, everyone. You're getting your fill of Thanksgiving turkey. I know I'm still eating on it. We're going to begin our meetings as we always do. It's been our tradition. We do a couple of things. We'll have a pledge of allegiance. We'll also have our chaplain. Chaplain Taylor come forward. You know, I was in Sunday School this weekend and our teacher, who is Pete Teague, which everyone knows, great Sunday School teacher. He posed a question, would you rather have wisdom or knowledge? You can acquire knowledge, but wisdom is something special. So, we asked that our chaplain come and pray for wisdom because wisdom is most important to us because we have decisions to make for people in this room and also for the folks of Rowan County, and we take that very seriously. So, Chaplain Taylor, if you'll come forward. Commissioners, if you'll join me, we'll get started.
Messrs?
Father, we've come to you today and thanks for the privilege to be here today. We do thank you for our county commissioners, dear Lord. As we close this year out, we thank you for the work that they've done, dear Lord. Pray you give them the wisdom they need for this meeting tonight, Lord. For your grace and mercy be with us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic which is founded, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Chaplain Taylor, thank you. I think we have a meeting mid-month. Do we? We have another meeting this month?
No.
Merry Christmas to you if we don't see you. Have a good Christmas. Reverend Dees.
We ready to do an election? All right, as is the time of year, I'll open up the floor for nominations for chairperson of the Rowan County Commissioners.
Nominate. What's your name? Greg.
Second. We have a nomination. I'll accept a motion to close nominations.
So moved.
All in favor of closing nominations?
Aye.
All right, by acclamation, welcome back for another year. Would you like to do the one for vice chair? You want me to handle that one?
Yeah, we'll entertain nominations for vice.
Nominate Jim Green.
All right, second.
Move to close the nomination.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Guys, I'll say real quickly, we've been here, this is, we're on our 12th year. Thank you. I, 12 years as chairman, appreciate it. Been a long time and I'm honored, honored to be a commissioner certainly, but then as we boil it down to the five of us, thank you for allowing me to lead your meeting. Appreciate that. Guys have wonderful strengths, interests, and a lot of talent. They contribute to this group. Again, I thought Salisbury Post, I don't know if it was you that told us, but we're the longest-serving five commissioners in the history of Rowan County. That's a good deal. But that record's going to be broken next, or it's going to be relented next year. So, but anyway, thank you for allowing us to serve and commissioners for allowing us to serve.
All right, I'll take just a minute. I have never said anything. You've always taken the stage here when we were elected. But it's been a joy for me to serve the people of Rowan County for 11 years and hopefully I can make it to one more year. But really, it has been a joy for me and to getting to know these people. I didn't know any of them before I served up here and it's been a pleasure to make friends and to serve the people of Rowan County for this long of a period of time. Thank you very much.
I will add ditto to that. This time has gone really, really fast, but it has been a real privilege serving with all of you gentlemen and serving the people of Rowan. It's just time to just take a step back and take care of a few things and let somebody else have their side at running the county and they can find out how hard it is.
Everyone has a time and we've had our time. Yep. We're looking forward to reinvigorated youth and new experience, new wisdom. So, good luck to all of you all. All right. All right, you see the agenda before you. I don't think we have any adjustments to the agenda. Would you reveal those to us?
We have an amended contract for consent item U, which is the audit contract, and then we have the performance and payout bonds for consent item D, which is the recycling roof replacement for Lefaves construction.
All right, thank you for doing that for me. All right, so we have those additions. Any deletions, commissioners? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, then we have the consent agenda before us. Motion to approve that.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, anyone for public comment? Nope. Oh, man. Did you sign up? Well, you have to sign the right sheet or you can't speak.
You have to come back next year.
Come on, come on.
He signed up for the road name change.
Well, then that's what you have to speak about is the road name change. No, no. You get your normal 30 seconds. Good to see you again.
First of all, congratulations to all of you for the job you've done here in our county. Just wanted to say that. Appreciate what you said, Mr. Green. That was good. The way y'all serve, you too, ma'am, and you, Mr. Greg. Listen, y'all know why I'm here, but I want to say this to start with. Just talking about wisdom. I taught a Sunday School class yesterday, had about 50 people in it, and we was right there in Proverbs. And Simon could ask God for anything he wanted to, but he asked for wisdom. Now, he used that wisdom at first of his, start of his kingdom there, he did, but the end, he kind of got away from it. He started off good. He started off with one wife. He wound up with 700 and 200 concubines, and that wasn't, wasn't God's will. And I appreciate the fact that I know that y'all pray over decisions that y'all make here in our county. That's a blessing, but I wanted to say that. But listen, I've been, you know, doing what I normally do, and by the way, I just left from over at the West End Plaza. I got to take a look at the Veterans Food Bank real quick. That's pretty impressive, what took place there, really impressive. But I'm still concerned about our veterans, our seniors, our disabled, and our young people. And I know that y'all brought some great jobs into the county. Those people now making some good money. I talked to a gentleman the other day and he had a friend that worked at Macy's. He said he brought home $1,700 a week. That's really good money for Rowan County. And there's others making in the 50 bracket and there's some people really happy over some of the jobs they've got because I've got out and I've sawed some of these people and I've talked to them. But here's our problem. Years ago, old people like me, we didn't make that much money. We didn't pay that much into Social Security. A lot of us only get a small check every month and we have to pay the same thing that everybody else is paying. We do get some discounts on a few things being seniors, but it's really hard on people right now. If you go through the Salisbury Post, you'll see a lot of articles in there about people in food banks and having drives and giving people clothing and things like that. And we can't forget, we can't forget about these people. We, we're trying to take care of everything else in the county and right now, I'm telling you, and I told you this before, but one day it's going to come back. What I'm telling you is the truth. One day it's going to show up and it's not going to be me doing it. You're going to notice people that's really going through some hardships. Some of these people, when the COVID came and prices went up so high and then they had an adjustment on the property taxes and things of that nature, what happened was what many people did have put back? And I heard people say, well, they should have saved in case they needed and the hardship came up. Well, they did save. But what they've saved, they've had to gradually spend it out. And now people are doing without and they can't make it. And I'm looking for somebody that can help them. And I know, Commissioner, you told me that our representatives had to do it, and I promise you, I've been talking to them. And I hope that they'll come up with a plan that they can do something for us. I don't care who I got to call, who I got to talk to. Believe it or not, I spent about 20 minutes on the phone with our lieutenant governor last week. Somewhere along the line, somebody going to say, hey, we got to do something. But I want to tell you again, you ain't going to find it out here in the rich neighborhood. I mean, we got some rich people in our county, we got some middle-class people in our county, and I'm telling you, we got some poor people in our county. And those poor people are really, really struggling. And as long as I've got breath and as long as I can take steps, I'm going to go on until I can find somebody to give these people help. Nobody wants to see anybody going through a hard time or doing without food. And for a man to work five days a week or six days, whatever the job allows him to work, and he's still got to go stand in line in the food pantry to get food for his family, there's something wrong. And that's all I got to say tonight. And I appreciate y'all putting up with me, I do, but I've got a desire to try to help people. Y'all have a good evening.
Thank you and Merry Christmas to you. All right, we'll move on then. Our first item, Pam, do you glass up that department the way you do? Thanks for coming.
So, I have one road naming request petition I received. This is actually in the jurisdiction of Town of Cleveland's extraterritorial jurisdiction, but we have to name the road. So, there is a third house desire to go right here in the center. I've already done some preaddressing, that's what those numbers are. But they have signed a petition, they came up with the name Neely Road, and that's what they're asking to be approved today.
But putting that on our screen, please.
Of our screens.
It's not on there. Up there.
I can't see behind me.
Why not?
Because I ain't going to turn around.
You ain't going to lie?
There it goes.
There we go.
All right. So, it's actually off of Mountain Road in Cleveland, and it was a driveway that already had two existing houses, 475 and 459. And they're wanting to put a house right here in the middle, which requires...
Pretty simple. Any questions, commissioners? If we don't have any, we'll have a public hearing. Allow anyone that would like to speak on this to speak. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Do we have a motion to approve Neely Road?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Erin, next. I just played up hearing Z10-25.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Got Z10-25, a request from RA to CBI. The property owner is Uriel Hernandez. This is at 175 High Rock Road, parcel 540006. So, this parcel is a 23.85 acre parcel. It's got split zoning currently between CBI and RA. The applicant's looking to expand the CBI zoning to include 8.145 acres on the track, which would be the red part outlined in this map here. They had the property surveyed, so they have a meets and bounds for the proposed zoning boundary, but essentially they'd be extending the zoning to a center line of a creek that they have here and then running it back to High Rock Road to add this portion to their CBI-zoned area. As far as plans and policies, this lands in Area 1 of the Eastern Area Land Use Plan. It's within an existing commercial industrial section and within the US 52 corridor overlay. Commercial and industrial uses having a need for rail and US highway are encouraged within the corridor overlay, along with quality building design and appearance and connectivity between adjacent undeveloped tracks. As far as consistency with the requested zoning district, CBI zone allows for a wide range of commercial business and light industrial activities, which support both the local and regional economies. CBI district is generally appropriate in areas identified, recommended for highway business along NC and US highways, maybe regional potential development nodes, commercial corridors, and existing commercial areas. As far as compatibility of the uses, the current RA zoning is mostly residential district with the uses permitted as home occupations. And then the CBI district's going to be a more open district with most of these uses permitted. As far as area pictures, that area of High Rock Road is mostly wooded. The activity is closer towards US 52. And you can see that when you pull out the aerials, see a good concentration of businesses right here along the highway. And the frontage of this property kind of just continues along High Rock Road here. Zoning wise, most of the area is zoned RA. You have this grouping, this cluster of CBI here that they're looking to expand. You'll see some larger industrial areas here. Those are mostly quarries and different types of mining operations. And then there's one mobile home park, a little bit down there on St. Stephen's Church Route. As far as facilities, US 52 highways got a capacity of 15,100 trips a day. As of 2022, it was at 7,200. This request went in front of the planning board at their October planning board meeting. Nobody spoke in favor or against the request. The planning board recommended approval of the rezoning and adopted the following statement. As far as staff comments, this is just a straight district rezoning, so there's no conditions that can be applied to the request. And then procedurally, we're looking at a legislative hearing, adopting statements, and then approve, deny, or tabling the request. You have any questions? Both me and the applicant are here.
Any questions for Erin? Not would the applicant like to speak? All right, then we'll sum up the hearing. We do this so that anyone that has anything to say, to add, positive, negative, feedback, that would be a good time to do that. Anyone? Close the public hearing. Commissioners, the greens, one of us is stating a consistency.
Z10-25 is consistent with the East Area Land Use Plan, reasonable and appropriate based on the following. One, the US 52 highway is identified as a corridor appropriate for commercial and industrial development. To the request, the plan, an already existing CBI zone is a logical extension of this zone. The rezoning is compatible with existing uses. That's made in the form of a motion.
Second. Any other discussion? All right, motion to approve that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Then do we have motion to approve Z10-25?
So moved. Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Erin, thank you. Ed, welcome.
Good afternoon. Moving up. Not hands-free yet, but we're working. So, we've got a legislative hearing here this afternoon that's identified as zoning text amendment 325 that has been submitted by the Paddock Property Group. Their request is to modify the definition of a motorsports racing complex in section 21-4 of the county zoning ordinance, as well as the specific conditional district standards for the same in 21-64F. And we're going to go through those here rather briefly in just a moment. The board may recall in '24, on two different occasions, it heard text amendments that established or created the notion of a motorsports complex and then amended it again in December of '24. This is kind of, as our county attorney would say, the third swipe at the apple, but nonetheless, I think it simplifies and perhaps maybe even streamlines it to some degree. Again, I'll try to be brief, but let you see what we're talking about here. Can you see this on your screen? If not, just a little bit. Is that better? Okay. So, the first fundamental change that we're talking about is the idea of integrating a motor speedway and a drag strip. The project that the applicant has proposed uses this notion. They will, they will take an existing track and merge it with another one, and they'll have essentially one track that can be used for two different things. The way the text was drafted and considered in both opportunities in '24, then contemplated this way. It was, everything was individual. And so, integrating one into two uses is the primary change here in the table before you recognizes that. So, the applicant had really proposed motor speedway and/or drag strip, and after some further discussion and planning board consideration, the terms or the merging of the two as an integration is what was agreed upon. So, that's the first. Combining those two also eliminates lines 19 through 20 at the bottom of page one in the text and 1 through 6 at the top of page two. The next primary change is as it relates to setbacks. And you can look at it here, but I'm going to try to do my best to explain to you. The current setback standards for a track and racing stands are 300 feet from the property lines if you adjoin a residential zoning classification, and that generally means RA. If you adjoin a CBI or an industrial designation, the setbacks for tracks and stands is 200 feet. What the applicant has proposed is to use a 12-foot sound wall, sound barrier wall in lieu of those setbacks. The setbacks would be a minimum of 40 feet adjoining a CBI or an industrial or non-residential zoning district, or 80 feet if they adjoin a residential zoning category. And that's what the red and blue text there from '25 down to '32 basically says. If you can't meet the 300-foot or 200-foot setback, you have the opportunity to do a noise or a sound barrier wall at 40 feet or 80 feet, depending on the classification you adjoin. The standard is based on what DOT uses for their noise walls along the interstate. That's, that's a fundamental change. Again, 300 and 200 are going to 40 and 80, or 80 and 40. So, the other changes that we've got in here, you'll see that are blue. We just inserted the correct section in the zoning ordinance. The other change is in the definition. Again, here to fore or currently, the idea was that you would have multiple tracks constitute a complex. This definition change says the racing activity may occur on one or more tracks. So, we get back to that integrated concept once again. Those are the three primary changes that are in the zoning text that's recommended to you today from the planning board. Any questions so far?
Yeah, Ed, how tall are these barriers you're talking about?
Minimum of 12 feet.
Is there any adjacent housing to this?
There could be, but again, this would apply to any, anybody that wanted to do this elsewhere in the county.
My concern is the noise.
Sure.
I just don't know that setting a wall 40 or 80 feet away, the sound that these drag cars are going to make, if somebody were to build a home on the other side, would this be something that would come back to bite them?
Well, this is the standard that's being proposed. It's not going to eliminate any noise completely. But I think it will have an impact, could have an impact. One of the other elements that exists as part of this text is, well, two things. In item number 10, all vehicles that are on the track that are not a grandfathered track would have to be muffled. So, the other item is that there's a requirement, where is it? For a noise study to be conducted.
Eleven.
Yeah, 11, yeah. So, there will be some consideration of that as part of the package that's submitted with the conditional district application. And that's got to be submitted with the application. It's not one of these things that they come up and say, yeah, we think we're going to meet it and we'll get it to staff after the fact. That's got to be presented on the front end, and that will be presented to this board.
Is that after the barrier is built, Ed?
I'm sorry, say that one more.
Is that going to be after the barrier is built?
Before. It would be modeled with that in place.
With it in place?
With it in place because they couldn't, they couldn't erect it and then do the study and then come to the board for consideration and have to, you know, model it. But the thing about these walls and the DOT referencing is DOT does have some identifiable reduction in noise levels. And I don't know what that is, but this is kind of their standard package, if you will. And so, they, these are the ones that are erected on the interstate by law.
So, my reading of it is whether it's 300 or 40. And noise, fire.
No, they did not. It was the setbacks is the fundamental change here in this text, is that there's a, there's a reduction in setbacks in favor of a 12-foot noise wall, depending on if you adjoin a residential zoning or a non-residential.
Ed, what's the zoning past that wall? Is it still RA or is it CBI?
It, it's a mix. In the particular case that we're looking at here, there's some CBI, there's some industrial, and there's some RA. So, it's, it's a mix.
Well, I guess my concern is what does it do to the RA property? As far as the value, if there's constant noise, who's going to want to buy it?
I can't answer that question.
Well, that's why I'm asking the question because that concerns me, that the property owner that currently owns that property is the one that's going to have the consequence.
I would remind you that this, there's a, there's a hearing component to this consideration. The applicant is here as well as his counsel that's representing him, and these are probably some questions that I think would best be posed to them.
All right. Would the applicant or counsel like to speak? Welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Lisa Valdez, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant. I'll be brief and then answer any questions that you might have. Mr. Muir just went through everything and to answer some of what, what was already posed. For this specific project, understanding that the text amendment applies countywide, but for this specific project, it's already in operation as far as the drag strip is concerned. The residentially zoned property that's adjacent to it is undeveloped, and everything else's surrounding is CBI and/or industrial on the other side. The, as Mr. Muir said, the wall standard that we've offered is what's used by NC DOT for noise barrier from interstate traffic and residential uses in order to reduce that setback. And as far as property being developed... And as far as property being developed for this specific project, there's already a use there that that property, that any adjacent property owners are well aware of. But that, to use a legal term, the coming to the nuisance issue of people that develop after, and that there are recent laws in place that became effective last month, excuse me, October, we're in December now, to protect this use similar to the same legislation that they have for farms, that if you come to it and you develop knowing that that's what's there, the first use that was there is protected. But I'm happy to answer any specific questions about our project and what we proposed here, understanding that we've tried to adapt it so that it applies laterally across the county, but also addresses our needs at this property.
Essentially, what you're saying is the land's there. If you want to buy it right there is what you're going to listen to.
Yes, to the extent that it's there now, and if they want to buy it, they know that that use is there.
That's why I'm saying, in other words, they're going to see what they're going to be dealing with. Okay.
How long has this track been there?
Oh, God.
Haven't I heard that it's the oldest?
Quite some time.
But what's the...
This is the track that George and I ran horses. I edged him out by...
All right, we'll hang out because we may have other questions. We're going to open up the floor. If there's anyone that is here that wants to speak on DTAO 3-25, this would be a great time. Anyone? Anyone like... Once? Twice? All right, so this is a statement of reason. Commissioner, is there anything else we want to talk about on this? I did go to the planning board meeting. Unanimous, Carla?
Did anybody show up to talk about it?
All right, I'll offer up this statement of reason. DTAO 3-25 is reasonable, appropriate, and necessary to meet the development needs of North Carolina. Not previously envisioned by the Rowan County zoning ordinance. Furthermore, the adoption of DTAO 3-25 is deemed appropriate based on the needs of motorized complex. Amendment, residential properties will be buffered by a minimum of 80 feet. Noise wall minimum of 12 feet tall will be no closer to property. Offer that form of...
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve DTAO 3-25.
No moves.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ed, welcome back. Let me read. So this is for SUPO 2-25. The hearing for consideration of SUPO 2-25 is now in session. We'll focus on an application submitted by Rowan Power LLC for the addition of three accessory structures located at the facility on tax parcel 822-007, addressed as 5755 North Carolina 801 Highway. If you feel that any member of the board may have conflict of interest in hearing the case, please address the board now prior to any testimony or information being presented. When the board enters into deliberations to decide the case, no further testimony may be presented. Board will render one of the following three decisions. One, will approve the permit as requested with additional conditions. Two, will continue the request, or three, deny the request. All parties who plan to testify in this case may come forward and be sworn in. Those who testify must state their name and address at the podium for the benefit of the board's clerk. All material presented must be given to the clerk and will become part of the record. The board can only accept sworn testimony. No hearsay evidence is admissible. As they're done over there, Ed will present the application consideration to the commissioner.
Taking inventory.
Reloading.
Well, good afternoon once again. My name is Ed Muir. I'm the Rowan County Planning Director. Work address is 402 North Main Street, room 204 here in Salisbury. Today, I'm going to give you a brief overview of the special use permit application that's been submitted by Southern Power Company on behalf of the owner, Rowan County Power. The chair has advised of the site address as well as the tax parcel information in that the applicant wishes to add three accessory structures to the property. General site information, we'll look here at the current Rowan County zoning map. The parcel is just north of Highway 70. It's located between Highway 801 and Parks Road. It's outlined here in black. The property totals about 400 acres. Rowan Power owns over 400 acres. In fact, they own 469.3 acres, according to the tax assessor. This board has had previous applications submitted to it in the form of conditional use permits in 2001, 2014, and 2021. There've been some zoning-enabling statute changes that occurred, and now we refer to these as a special use permit, and that's why this now carries the SUPO 2-25 nomenclature. You see this? This is the site plan. We'll give a closer view here in a second. But again, they're looking to add three structures within its current operational area. No expansion into the tree line buffers that are pretty robust around the site. Here, you can see that there's a 30-by-120 pole building that's proposed on the north end of the site, a new guard shack here on the entrance road, and then what they term as a oil building that's about 30 by 50. You look at that in combination with the 2025 aerial imagery, you can see that in the tree line wooded around the site. But here's the approximate locations of these improvements. Again, the pole building on the north end, relocation of the current guard shack from here to closer to the facility entrance, and then the oil building here within the existing operational area. We're going to jump right into the specific conditional use criteria. This was contained in the zoning packet. I'm going to briefly go through these. The first is that operational areas have to be at least 200 feet from a zone lot line. In this particular case, the guard shack is 750 feet from the line. Open storage is over 1,000 feet, and the proposed oil building is more than 1,400 feet from any adjoining property line. Staff feels that the application satisfies the standard. The operational area shall be at least 300 feet from any residence, church, or school. You saw the picture there. Staff would tell you that they're more than 1,200 feet away, and we feel that the application complies with this standard as well. As it relates to dust, odor, and glare, roads and storage areas have to be at least 20 feet from any property line. The site is accessed from 801, and the majority of the operational area has an asphalt surface, and the remainder is a gravel surface. There haven't been any complaints relative to these items since this facility began operation in 2000. Staff would tell you that the application satisfies this third standard. The fourth is operation. It requires a sign be posted at the maintenance and the entrance. You remember at our beginning, there was a slide that showed Plant Rowan there. This application satisfies that standard. Security restrictions. There have to be gates and fences to prevent any unregulated dumping of materials. That's not really the case here, but it has both gates and fence to prevent unauthorized access. We would tell you that the application satisfies this standard. They also have to have proof of a permit issued by the state in accordance with applicable provisions. Goes back to CPNL back in 1999. They were issued a certificate of public convenience and necessity by the Utilities Commission. That's now been assumed by Southern Power from Progress Energy in June of 2006. We would tell you that the application satisfies those standards. These are the six specific criteria, and then you have a couple of general ones. It never gets easy in quasi-judicial hearings, and that's why we've really transitioned to conditional districts when we can. But nonetheless, we'll come back to this application. Adequate transportation to the site exists. You have an applicant as well as staff commentary. But I would tell you that 801 has a design capacity of over 15,000 vehicles a day. DOT traffic counts for about 3,400 vehicles per day on 801 on this site. We think that satisfies that criteria. The use will not significantly detract from the character of the area. The two proposed accessory structures will be within the fenced operational area, and the guard shack is actually being relocated closer to the facility. We feel that none of these are visible from 801 or other vantage points. Hazardous safety conditions will not result based on the uses. We don't think this is an issue as well. And the same for significant noise, odor, glare, or dust, traffic parking problems. We don't think those are issues as well. And the use will not create significant visual impacts for adjoining properties. As I mentioned before, none of these should be visible from 801 or adjoining properties. So as it relates to the process for a quasi-judicial hearing, this is ripe for being considered. Adjoining property owners were notified the 17th of November. Sign was posted the following day. We had a couple folks sworn in that are representatives of Southern Power that may want to address any issues that they feel need to be, the board needs to be made aware of. And also, you've got the public, which doesn't appear to be sworn in. But that's the process, and then you will close the hearing, and we'll come back up here and help you with your findings of fact real quick after that's done. Any questions? All right, thank you.
All right, as Ed has mentioned, we're required to do a quasi-judicial hearing. We'll do that now. If the applicant is here and would like to speak, if they have anything to add, love to hear from you. Not required? Certain though? Okay, good. Anyone from the general public would like to speak? One? Twice?
Okay, as part of the quasi-judicial process, the board needs to make separate findings on each of these. And so you would make a motion after each one. The first is that development of the property will not materially endanger the public health or safety. Staff would tell you that the request exceeds all the conditional use criteria for electric services. We went through each of those contained in the zoning ordinance, especially those intended to protect the public health and safety regarding the setbacks from the property lines, separation from residents, churches, and schools, and it has controlled access to the site. The second one is that it would not injure the value of adjoining property. The facility has a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate the power facility issued by the Utilities Commission. And the location and character is in general harmony with the area and in general conformity with adopted county plans. The proposed structures are within the operational area and are not viewable from adjoining properties, and the proposed structures are necessary to support the facility. Also, when area one of the West Land Use Plan is consistent with commerce and industrial recommendations for the area. If you find that these are sufficient, again, you would vote on them individually, and then you would need to make a motion to approve the special use permit. And we've offered something here. In the absence of any evidence presented to the contrary, the board would approve the issuance based on a request compliance with the zoning ordinance and the findings of fact as determined by the board. So I'll skip back to that if you want to use that as your sort of basis for making those findings. Sometimes have the conditional use permit worksheets. And I think this kind of skips to those last three that are at the bottom. And they start off with the development of the property.
So in my agenda for special use...
Yes. You have setbacks from property lines. Yeah. So setbacks is number one. All operational areas shall be at least 200 feet, and then operational areas 300 feet. And what we did was just look at those as it relates to the public health or safety. We didn't itemize every one of them, I think. It's okay to just pick them out. Yeah.
All right, Commissioner Kaski, would you like to offer up these considerations?
I have just a question for Ed of somebody, maybe from Southern Power. Will this new building... Southern Power has been a great partner for Western Rowan County. I just have a question about the room. I've never been able to get in there because I have no business being in there. But are we going to have enough room? Because I know some time ago, they had an issue, and they had to call out fire departments. And we had fire departments from everywhere going up there. Will there be room enough with these new buildings? Does that change access in any way to what you're doing? He's already...
Chris Pierce, the plant manager at the plant. 575 North Carolina 801. So the question was, will it obstruct any of the ways in and out of the plant? Is that what you were asking? No, the gate.
I just want to make sure that our boys that go there to fight a fire
Right.
can get to you without any issue.
Absolutely. It doesn't change the access at all. The gate, there's an outer gate and an inner gate. The inner area is where we will change and move guard shack to the inner gate. The outer gate still has the Knox box, still has access like it always has. So that won't...
And you physically inside where the buildings, even with the new buildings going up, you have plenty of room for them to be able to fight any fires?
Absolutely.
Or whatever that goes back.
None of the buildings on the plant proper change their location. So everything's where it was. The second building that we talked about is literally on the footprint of an old building. So it's basically improving an existing building to a larger structure. It doesn't change any of the access.
Just an information question only. You folks have been great partners with us up there, and we really appreciate you being in Rowan County.
Thank you. We enjoy it.
Anything else? All right, Commissioner Kaski.
I move that SUPO 2-U5 requests will not materially endanger the public health or safety. Request exceeds all conditional use criteria for electric services contained in section 21-65A of the Rowan County zoning ordinance, including those intended to protect public health and safety regarding setbacks from property lines, separation from residents, churches, and schools, and controlled access to the site. separation from residents, churches and schools, and controlled access to the site.
Second.
Move this UP O2-25 request will not substantially injure the value of adjoining property or in, or is in a public necessity. Facility has a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate the power generation facility issued by North Carolina Utilities.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Move SP, SPU O2-25 request. Location and character will be in general harmony with the area and in general conformity with the adopted county plans. Proposed structure, structures are within the operational area of the facility and are not viewable from adjoining properties. Property structures are necessary to support facility operations. Areas, the site is in Area 1 of the Western Rowland Land Use Plan and is consistent with the commerce industrial recommendation for the area.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a motion to approve SPU O2-25?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we pay you?
This is the.
So this is the volunteer fire department grants. This was something we've already all voted on years ago. It was supposed to be continued in our budget, just overlooked in the last budget. It came to our attention recently that it wasn't in there. And it's basically, we were giving $10,000 grants to each of our rural volunteer fire departments, and they were using that funds mostly for staffing for the department. And so, basically, this is the bring up that we missed in the budget, and we'd like to redo that. And Chairman, you had some additional ideas there?
Continue. You make me do it. I did receive a call or two today from municipalities that appreciated that we were doing this. Their point to me was that residents within the municipalities also pay county taxes. And since this is really a contribution to the fire department, affected county residents, they wanted to be included in this as well, especially along the lines of mutual aid, which goes both ways. Our volunteer fire departments go up to either cover or go to the assistance of the municipalities on site. And the vice versa is also the case where when our folks need help, municipalities show up, it's all part of mutual aid, you know how it works. Everyone comes running. Thought about it this afternoon, tried to myself decide just for myself, how do I argue against that? Not to argue against it, but what's the logic behind that and to agree with it? So, talking with Mike and Jim, with Aaron, and I would like to also.
I think we would just have to add the, or in our motion to budget management, need to be for $300,000.
Again, the big deal for me is that we still, still think it's time to talk. But our municipal, our residents, help them become better in order for them to help our volunteer fire department.
Yeah, I think you make a very good point on the mutual aid. They're using their equipment and their time that they, those taxes go out sometimes to the rural areas.
I have a question. I noticed the funding on this started off at $51,000, and it's just incremental going up to only $70,000 next year. How are we?
Well, this is for the next item. Go ahead and take. This isn't even about. Oh, we're talking about the. Yeah, she's going to give a financial report.
Well, it's not on the agenda, so I didn't know it till after the board report. If you want me to vote on something, I haven't seen the financial report.
It is, it is in the agenda under item E.
Well, it says item G, financial.
Right, the financial report is next. I don't know why that report. So after this, we're going to do board appointments, and then she always does.
I just want to make sure that we have money next year to do this. In other words, I don't want to do it and now we're out of money. Where does that leave us?
We could table this for two items if you'd like. We can go ahead, motion to table it for a moment.
Well, I mean, we have to vote on it every year. If we don't have money at the next budget, then we would.
I'm looking at a number for 2026, I don't know how you arrive. Well, I'm saying I want to make sure that we don't run out of money if we're going to do this plan. That's by consensus.
Let's do this, I'll make a motion, we table it until after.
That's fine.
Second? Thanks, all in favor? All right, let's move then to our board appointments. I'll run through some board appointments and make one motion. The adult home care, Ms. Carol Cody filed her resignation for adult home care in North Carolina Board, effective December 31st, has to be removed. Do we have a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the health board, Dr. Amy Wilson applied for reappointment, a physician seat on the health board. John Thomason Jr. applied for reappointment, a general public seat on the health board. A home and community care block grant, there are four vacancies, and we have three applicants, Michael, Warren Agee, Alex Bruce, Kristen Clements. Library board, Brian So has applied for reappointment, an at-large seat. Miller's Ferry Volunteer Fire Department, Michael Hallgood. David Lynn Oakley applied for appointment, two vacant county seats. Nursing home advisory boards, Sylvia Darlene Osha, Fasha, I'm sorry, applied for reappointment to an at-large seat. And we'll stop there, do we have a motion to accept those?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Planning board, the following applications received, we have four openings, two, three, four, five, six, six at-large seats. We have two for reappointment, I'd make the motion for them to reappoint them. John Reed and Cory Hampton Connolly, and make a motion that we reappoint those two.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. And then we have two more openings for, we have four applications, two more openings. I believe Mr. Ian is, appreciate you coming, that makes a difference. Make a motion that we appoint Ian Shepherd to the planning board, we have a second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then we have, would you like to make a motion? All right, motion and a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And then Region F Aging Advisory Committee. Alex Bruce has met the maximum term limit, but is eligible for an alternate seat. So it's like we would move him to an alternate seat, and then been asked to move Alex Bruce from an at-large seat to an alternate seat on the Region F Advisory Committee. Do we have a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Therapeutic Recreation Board, there are three vacant at-large seats, and Anita Fitzgibbon, Connie Johnson Acero, and Nicholas Bader have all applied. And then on the Tourism Development Authority, Stephen Kidd and Andrew Maven has applied. Do we have a motion for all of the?
I got a problem with Andrew Maven. Because, you know, he's the one that owns New Serum. He owns New Serum. Well, he's all the time wanting to walk across the parking lot down there to New Serum.
Is that a motion?
No, that's acceptable.
Andy Maven. I'd like to recommend Andy for that.
Normally, we don't comment on applicants. All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, say aye. You guys, man, going to get us in trouble our last year. All right, we have our financial report, make it a good one.
All right, so looking at total cumulative expenditures through October, we are at 70.2 million, which is 6.6 up from last year, or 10.4% over the previous year. And revenues, we're at cumulative through October, 96.5 million, which is up 3.7 million over last year, or 4%. Yes?
And you may need to research this. I know that we budgeted flat. Did we do, did we do an increase, increase in revenue at a certain? I mean, I'm looking at this, I'm trying to recall, is this a surprise, 4 million?
So, let me, let me do some looking into it. What I've looked at today, the biggest increase, or where I'm seeing an increase large, was in just our property taxes that we've collected so far. So, which is the next slide.
Which typically happens.
Typically, we're going to get a large bump again in December to January when they're due. Right. But a lot of people have their property taxes in escrow, so if we had a lot of new home sales, it would make sense that we would get, because like mortgage companies pay them early. So I think that's where a lot of the big increase has come from, this early in the year.
We'll know February or October levels out.
Right, exactly.
I mean, as we look at this, it looks like we're ahead of budget.
Correct, which, because of the property taxes coming in, we will be, so.
I know you are.
So when we look at property taxes we've collected through September in this chart here, and so we were up 5 million, 5.5 million over last year at the same point in time, or 7.65%. So, like we were just talking about, I think some of that is the escrow that happens with people whose homes are under mortgage with mortgage companies. And then, these collections, I mean, our revenues include everything we're collecting. Now, some of that we, you know, we send out to the, like, we collect for the cities too. So I'm pretty sure that that collection is still in here, and then it gets sent out. So, let me do some more research on exactly what's sitting in that number to help justify the five.
Yeah, you really can't call what the reasoning is.
It's hard, right.
You could, you could make a really bad assumption that the economy's getting better, folks are paying their taxes right.
Right.
We can't, we don't know.
Yeah.
We don't know. Maybe that a lot of homes being built, you're right.
Yeah.
Escrow pays early.
Yeah.
We don't really be nice.
Yeah, I'll see if I can tell what kind of information they have at the tax office. So how those payments, if that'll help, I'll be. And then sales tax, so we're back at July, so it's a little dot for the current year. So we're pretty much, it was only up 600, I mean, 61,000 over the previous July. So, now we did come in higher than what we had, we budgeted flat. We did come in higher than what we had budgeted on sales tax. But I think still being conservative with that is still the best way to go at this point, because that's only a 1.7% of the last. Investment report. So we still have the majority, I'm not going to read this word for words to you guys, but the majority of our funds are sitting at the Capital Management Trust because the rate is still higher there, and it's more liquid. That rate has come down from the previous quarter as interest rates are coming down, so that makes sense. But we still in total earned almost $3 million in the first quarter with all of our investments, including checking accounts and that.
Again, when we're, now, tax. Something we did a few years ago, we really didn't have time to sit and. You're looking at $3 million. So, just being smart with, you know, if you get paid once a year, a week, you only get paid. You get this big flush of income, then you see the risk.
Right.
Then you got 12 months mortgage, groceries, all of that, and you hope to have enough. This, we've got, it looks like we've got a lot of money, we do, we have a lot of money to pay. That'll be drawn down in a 12-month period, but what we're doing with it, we need to make a difference.
Right.
In this case, changed everything up, it was 3 million in the first quarter. You remember, I mean, that would be 12 million annually.
Yeah, and that's about what we had last.
But that's about what it is. Now you're looking at that change affecting our taxes by about eight percent. Those are real dollars.
It may not be that much this year because the interest is expected to go down.
They are, it is trending down, so we didn't expect to earn as much. But hopefully, it's going to level out and stay at a decent number, where it's not like it did in the past.
Good chance.
Any other specific?
You know my question.
Nothing that I know of at this point in time.
Red flag, tell me if you did.
Still, it's still early.
I'll be the first to know, won't I? Let out in handcuffs. All right, we'll go back to our other item. Commissioner Pierce, any questions answered?
No, I got my question answered. Thank you.
Sure. Make a motion then, Mike?
Yeah, I move that we allot $300,000 for the volunteer fire department grant. Oh, volunteer, and Miss.
Second, any questions? Can't say thank you, or our first honor is really.
Mr. Chairman, I got, I got a call from a couple of smaller volunteer fire departments, and they really appreciate us going back in. and they really appreciate us going back in and fixing that item. Staffing is really difficult for large and small volunteer fire departments nowadays, and this money goes a long ways to help, especially the smaller department.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a closed session?
Yeah, we do.
All right, the board is asked to enter in a closed session pursuant to General Statute 143, 3181181, to consider approval of the minutes. Closed session held on November 17th and as described by Statute 143318.10E and pursuant to 1433181183 to consult with the. We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We will commence as soon as the doors close. All right, we're back. Do we have a motion to come out of closed session?
No move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have one item. I'd like to make a motion that we grant to the Department of the Army the right of entry and access agreement to airport property in the closed land. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Pierce?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Be safe.